Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Ms. Corran?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
I need a motion to certify closed session that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements of Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which this certification applies and only such public business matters were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, and considered. Motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those -- oh, roll call, I'm sorry.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Ms. Corran?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
In closed session, we do have two actions.
I move that we readmit a student, Student A, to Montgomery County's Public Schools.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm sorry, roll call.
Sure.
Excuse me, yes.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Ms. Corran?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Do we have a second motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we readmit Student B to Montgomery County's Schools.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Ms. Corran?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
My iPad is not cooperating with me. Okay, at this time, at each of our regular scheduled meetings, the school board sets aside 30 minutes for citizens to address the board about issues pertaining to public education in Montgomery County. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to speak. The screens throughout the room and the laptop will indicate when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining and when the three minutes has passed. Are there any people who have signed up for this? Okay, there's no one that's signed up. Does anyone out in the audience wish to address the school board? Seeing no one, public address closed. Consent items. If there's nothing to be pulled from consent agenda, then we will consider the consent items approved. Any discussion regarding any consent items? Okay, approved. Personnel report. Do we have a motion to adopt the personnel report?
So moved.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion in reference to the personnel report? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Pay the bills. Do we have a motion to pay the bills?
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Let me get my statement out here.
Can we, can we get a motion on the board first, then you can address it?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to pay the bills?
I may as well pay the bills.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Nah. In order to avoid a conflict of interest or even the appearance of impropriety, I will abstain from voting on the part of this action involving the Crosspoint Conference Center and/or the Fourth Square Church and disclose my interest in accordance with the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act.
So noted. All those in favor of paying the bills, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The bills are paid. Superintendent's reports, recommendations, and announcements, and no offense to you, John, but welcome back. We're glad to have you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ivers. It's my pleasure to be back with you this evening, and before moving into my agenda items, I would like to publicly thank my staff, who did such a wonderful job in my absence. Dr. Staton is probably feeling very relaxed this evening in that he is in the audience rather than on the dais, and they have ably kept the district moving in the right direction, have gone through a very tough budget cycle with you all, and my commendations, they are an absolutely fantastic team, so I thank you. And again, I am glad to be back with you tonight. First item that I have this evening is a grant proposal, and the purpose of this grant is to expand opportunities for students with disabilities to acquire STEM literacy and other skills and credentials to prepare them for high-demand, high-wage, and high-skilled careers in Virginia. Montgomery County Public Schools is very fortunate to have one of 22 STEM grants that were awarded in the state of Virginia by Virginia Department of Education, and that is what allowed us to apply for this second grant. If awarded, our academy teachers will receive additional training focused on meeting students' individual learning needs. It's my recommendation this evening that the board approve this grant.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the grant?
Just think it's a wonderful opportunity.
I took your words, yes, I agree. Wonderful opportunity. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passed.
The next item this evening is another grant. This is a program that many of you are familiar with. The Boys and Girls Clubs of the Roanoke Valley, the NRV Unit, in partnership with Montgomery County Public Schools, have applied again to Virginia Department of Education for a 21st Century Community Learning Centers grant in the amount of $598,029. This program currently serves the students of Shawsville Middle School and Christiansburg Middle School. If we are awarded the grant again in the new grant cycle, we will continue the program and offer school and summer school programs to continuously serve these students. Again, I recommend the board's approval of this grant application.
Do we have a motion to approve the grant presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Another great opportunity, especially the summer component. That's very, very valuable.
I agree. Any other discussions, comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Third item this evening is an Atmos Energy Corporation easement. I believe Mr. Baranato has briefed you about this in some of his past facilities reports, and we're now ready to bring it to the board. Atmos Energy Corporation requested a 15-feet-wide easement for a gas line along the portion of the edge of the Christiansburg Middle School property. The requested easement and gas line extensions are at the edge of the property and will not affect current or future development of the school facilities. The administration recommends the school board approve in concept the requested easement and pass the request on to the Board of Supervisors to grant the easement under the conditions A through F that are listed in your agenda item. The item this evening is recommended for action by the board to approve the request so that we may send it on to the supervisors.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a point of clarification from me, what exactly does "in concept" mean?
Well, in this instance, we have the information from Atmos, but we don't have the final authority to approve this. So we have the concept before us. It does meet our requirements for approval. We pass it on then as a concept that's been approved by the school board, and the supervisors then ultimately take the action to approve the easement.
So my question is, if there are changes that are made, at what level of changes does there have to be for it to come back to us, for us to approve once again?
I've not had one to do that, Mr. Lyons, so I would suspect that it would not come back to us unless it violated one of these A-through-F principles that the supervisors would approve it. They might ask for some additional work to be done to meet their expectations, but at this point, it does meet our requirements.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
As you can see, we have some young folks with us in the audience this evening, and I'm very pleased to have the opportunity for teachers and students from some of our career and technical education programs to share their experience with you tonight. To introduce the program, I'd like to ask Rick Weaver, our supervisor for career and technical programs, to come to the podium, and I believe they've left you a little treat at your, on the dais, and like to commend Rick for his leadership with our CTE programs and with the expo that we've been doing for the last three years, I think now, with the, in conjunction with the Home Builders Association, and look forward to hearing from our students this evening.
Thank you. The briefs at your seat were provided by some of the students who are here tonight. I appreciate their consideration of the board members. There were some cards, thank you cards for you, but unfortunately, they got mislabeled. They, a little confusion about whether you're school board members or board of supervisors members, but you'll get those. I was asked to provide an overview of career and technical education for you this evening. In your package, you'll find a document that looks like this. This has some information about the full scope of CTE in Montgomery County, and I hope you'll find time in your busy schedules to review that information, but that's not what our presentation is tonight. I've invited a few students to speak to you about what they do in their CTE programs to give you a good, solid snapshot of what goes on, not just in the programs that they represent, but in all the programs in CTE in Montgomery County. This is a snapshot, it's not intended to be a comprehensive look, but I think it'll give you some insight on what we do in our programs across the county. We're going to start with representatives from one of our agricultural programs, Kristen Morris and Ryan Graves. Come on up, please.
Hi, my name is Kristen Morris. I am Vice President of Christiansburg Chapter of the FFA. FFA has been our schools across the country for many decades. CHS is very proud of our members of FFA. We have received several degrees and awards over the past 10 years. We have had 14 state FFA degree recipients, five American degree recipients, four state agri-science fair winners, and eight state proficiency award winners. For me, it is an honor to receive my state FFA degree this year. I would like to tell you a few requirements to receive these awards. As a state FFA degree recipient, I have to receive a chapter degree first and be active in the FFA for at least two years while completing systematic school instruction and agriculture and community service activities. All of my accomplishments were documented and submitted to the state FFA office in an application for the state FFA degree. I believe that this award demonstrates my hard work and ability to work toward a goal. To receive the American FFA degree, FFA members have to be demonstrated the highest level of commitment to the FFA and make significant accomplishments in their supervised agriculture experiences. Agri-science fair winners compete with their knowledge in science and technology of agriculture. To receive the state proficiency award, members must show through their supervised agriculture experiences that they have developed specialized skills that they may apply to their future careers. FFA members, helps members to succeed in all aspects of life. All members will have a sound knowledge of and appreciation for the role that agriculture plays in society so that they may develop into engaged citizens with an understanding of its impact on the Commonwealth. I feel the FFA was an important part of my high school journey. Thank you for allowing students and myself to have the opportunity to learn and grow in the FFA. I will now turn the podium over to Ryan Graves of the Christiansburg FFA Chapter.
My name is Ryan Graves, and I'm the Sentinel of the Christiansburg FFA Chapter. Montgomery County Schools has also enjoyed a partnership with Power Zone Incorporated. Power Zone is an outdoor power equipment dealership located in Christiansburg. The Christiansburg High School Small Engines classes has benefited from this partnership in several ways. The professionals at Power Zone have brought equipment to the school for learning purposes, shared training materials, taught lessons, and helped with the FFA Small Engines Contest for several years. I would like to thank Power Zone and all the partners of MCPS for helping me and other students develop career skills. Thank you.
Are either of your teachers here with you this evening?
Yes.
Would you stand and let us recognize you as well?
This is Mr. Lowe. Next, we'll have Ms. Kimberly Flinch from one of our business departments talk about a business enterprise that she's intimately involved in. Kimberly?
Oops. Good evening. I am Kimberly Flinch, a current student of Ms. Picarella's Business Management Class. A major part of the class is organized around a business model that allows us to practice the concepts that we have learned in class. Each year, students of the class must develop a business plan and execute the plan by determining a product to be produced, how we will go about to run the business, and selling stock to support the activity. We are then assigned corporate roles and must fulfill these roles just like we would in a real business. Our business this year is Real Good Smoothies. We produce smoothies to sell at lunchtime to the school community. The students of the class are responsible for determining what flavors to sell based on data we collect, marketing the product, maintaining finances, and producing and selling the smoothies. Like any successful business, the class is split up into a hierarchy. In each class, we have a CEO and a president who are responsible for the overall management of the business. Below these positions, employees are split into departments of Human Resources, Marketing, Production, Physical Operations, Finance, and Social Media. Each of these departments has a vice president and several employees. Every student has a role as either an officer or as a member of one of the departments. Along with these roles, each student must also work in the cafeteria where they are involved in the actual production of the smoothies. My corporate role is CEO. Additionally, throughout our project, business people have come to help guide us in running our business. At the end of our nine-week project, the finance department determines our profit or loss for the project. If we make a profit, stockholders are paid, employees are paid, and some money will be held by the company for next year's class to start their project. This year, there are two classes, so we compete to see who can run the most successful business. I believe that this project is a great because it allows us to practice the concepts of business management and to really understand what it takes to run a business. Again, it really is a wonderful way to learn business management and to gain hands-on experience, and I know it has also influenced many of my classmates, including myself, to pursue a career in business. Thank you.
Kimberly, is your teacher here this evening?
She's not.
Okay.
Okay, Kimberly, did you folks make those smoothies?
We do.
That's what you made your money on?
Yeah. Sell the smoothies to the students and teachers of our school.
Are you running in the black or the red at this point in the school year?
We have made a profit.
They pay a pretty good return on their stock.
Very good.
So, when you say the stockholders, are those other students or is that yourselves?
We sell each member of our classes required to buy a stock, and then we also sell to other students as well as other faculty and staff throughout the school.
And you sell these every day?
We sell them as we get another project to have funds to use throughout the project.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Thanks.
We have a group of students next. We're going to begin with Megan Bennett, who will be the chief spokesperson. She will introduce her colleagues in the robotics program, and I'm told that the best operator of the robot is going to be at the podium, so when the robot comes into the room, please watch your feet.
Hello, my name is Megan Bennett, and this is Cameron Bus, and we are extremely excited to share a few words about our program with you tonight.
I am Cam Bus, a senior at Blacksburg High School. Tonight, I am here to speak to you about the robotics program offered throughout the school division. I entered the robotics program my sophomore year of high school, and it has carried me, carried with me through my senior year and further. During the fall semester, students learn life skills, teamwork, and tool safety. The core of the program consists of an intensive build season where students are mentored by Virginia Tech engineering students to design and fabricate an 120-pound robot. After the build season, the robot is packaged up and sent off to competition. Competition is the capstone experience where students utilize their knowledge by competing with 60 other robots and present to judges. After we have attended competition, we get to work on projects such as remote-controlled UAVs. At the end of my junior year, I contacted the professor at Virginia Tech that worked with us during the build season about an internship over the summer. Because of my experience with robotics, I was able to revamp a Virginia Tech senior design project about a 3D printable drone. I redesigned the project and received a patent for my work. The robotics experience has been life-changing, and I'll certainly try to further it as I go through life.
I would first like to thank you again for allowing us to speak for you tonight. My name is Megan Bennett, and my classmate Cameron just spoke to you a little about what the program is about, but robotics is more than just a class. Not only has robotics taught me basic mechanical skills, but has also taught me to be a more involved member in my community. Team 401 is dedicated to outreach and spreading the spark that the first program has put into myself and my teammates. We do so by hosting demonstrations at elementary schools, at Salem Red Sox games, and throughout sporting events in Montgomery County schools. We have also utilized our off-season to create a tricopter blimp and other projects that help keep us involved. It is inevitable that robotics has put, had, made me more passionate about them than I ever thought I could be. So with that being said, thank you again.
The last member of the team is going to make an appearance. The teachers, Daryl Roberts and Michael Culver, are with their students tonight. These folks have been to two competitions this year with this particular robot, and I don't think they're going to throw the ball to you.
That is cool.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay.
Can we get the, all the students and the teachers from that group to stand so we can see who you are? I know there's several in the audience. Wonderful. Thank you all so very much.
Okay, I have a question slash comment. I saw your mug on television, and behind you was a drone. Are you spying on us, or what was that all about?
I wouldn't admit to nothing.
Do we have anything to do with that drone that was in that?
I'm actually not sure what you're talking about. The last time I was on television was at the expo.
Yeah.
And actually, this is one of those pictures of the expo where I was on TV at this event.
As you were talking to the reporter, there was a drone behind you hovering.
I missed the drone. Do you guys remember a drone there? They had their robot there, but I don't remember the drone.
In the presentation, there's, there's a reference to it. Check it out, because it's really cool.
Okay, I will. Okay. My interest is big. Say again? What did you say? You had your drone there that day?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't even realize it was there.
Well, excellent.
So last but not least, we have a group of middle school students who are far beyond their years and their accomplishments. They just came back from state competition this weekend, and I'm going to ask Elijah to introduce his teammates who are with him tonight.
I am Elijah Hodges. This is Steven Yang, Joel Hodges, and Lilly Zoo. We're students in Ms. Crawford's Middle School Technology Education Program, and we're here tonight to talk to you about our projects and experiences in the program over the past year. Last summer, four other students and I attended the 2013 National TSA Conference. At the end of the competition, I was awarded with the national championship in both transportation systems and problem-solving, as well as a second-place finish in technical design. I've brought the rubber band-powered boat with me this evening that I used for the national competition. This past weekend, Steven, Lilly, Joel, and I were four of a 24-student contingent from Blacksburg Middle School, who along with eight students from Blacksburg High School, participated in the Virginia TSA state competition. We were eligible to attend based on our performance in the regional competition in early March. I personally was involved in multiple competitions that included dragster, technical design, junior solar sprint, and water infrastructure. I've brought several of the projects that I entered in the event with me tonight. Here's the CO2-powered dragster that I raced in the competition. After race results, wind tunnel testing, and evaluation of my engineering design drawing, I was awarded first place in this competition. Although I attempted to manufacture my car using the CNC machine in class, ongoing issues with the software and equipment resulted in making the car with tools in the shop. I also competed in technical design. Our onsite challenge was to research and design a coin sorter that was not electronically powered and could be carried in one hand. After pulling an all-nighter, I was rewarded with a first-place finish. My involvement with the TSA program has increased my ability to apply STEM knowledge from the classroom to create solutions for real-world problems through application of the engineering design process. Finally, I would like to thank you for your continued support of our TSA program.
My name is Joel Hodges, and I am in sixth grade. I placed first with my STEM animation team. Our competition was to make a three-minute animation and a notebook on a STEM topic. We chose to make an animation on the lifecycle of a caterpillar. I also have the solar car that my brother and four other teammates made, and thank you for the support of our TSA program.
Hi, I'm Steven Yang. I also went to the competition last weekend where I entered a first place and three finalist awards. I would like to show you some of the projects that I did for the competition. This is the bridge that, this is the bridge from the structural model contest where Lilly and I won first place. We created three different engineering drawings for three potential spans the judges could give us that we brought to the competition. Then at the conference, we built and tested the model. This is an airplane I built for the flight challenge. It catapults into the air and has to stay there in the longest time. I also have a design notebook with a flight log, photographs, and an engineering drawing. I also entered the technical design competition like Elijah, and I resulted as a finalist. I have with me my engineering design notebook as well.
Hi, I'm Lilly Zoo. I also went to the dragster comp, the competition last weekend where I was Steven's partner for the bridge, and I also won finalist in dragster, website design, and leadership strategies. We learned a lot from this experience and really enjoyed being able to design and build things that we could take to competitions. Some skills we have learned from technology education are how to design and engineer, how to problem-solve, how to make technical drawings, teamwork skills, leadership and communication skills, and time management. These are all skills that we are going to use for our lifetime. Thank you for giving us a chance to learn these things in middle school.
And is your, is your teacher?
Yes, she is.
With you? If she could stand?
Mrs. Crawford, stand, please.
Yes.
I need to say that I've been in Stephanie's class several times over the last several years, and it's, it's engagement, it's excitement, and it's organized chaos. And I love going in there because it's just amazing. And this is, obviously, these young people are proof of the pudding, and I'm pleased to announce that a couple of them are my neighbors, which I really am pleased with that. But this is the future right here. This is definitely the future, and we've got to open up the horizons for these kids instead of closing them.
I told you they were beyond their years, and that's what we get when we have great teachers leading great kids. You're seeing the proof in the pudding.
No doubt about it.
I asked my teachers to identify some kids who could come speak to you tonight. I didn't sort them. I didn't choose them. I got what they, what came to my desk, and that's what you're seeing tonight. This is truly a cross-section. For every student or student group that's here tonight, there's dozens more just like them in Montgomery County Schools doing great things every day, and I couldn't be any more proud of them and their teachers than I am tonight. Thank you.
Before we finish, could we just get all the teachers and the students to stand? And I think we've got a number of parents that are with the groups also. If you, if you would stand, let us see everybody who came to support our CTE program.
This is really wonderful.
Thank you so very much for being here with us tonight. We appreciate it.
Can I just say that I just think this is just so wonderful to have you all here, and I hope that folks understand that, you know, CET- And I hope that folks understand that, you know, CET vocational, as it was called before, has gotten a not-so-positive image in our community, and it is one of the most wonderful programs that we have in the school system. And I just hope that folks will, students and their parents will take a deeper look at what is offered and have their children participate in our CET programs. You know, I'm just thrilled that you are here. Thank you.
Speaking of that, on behalf, you're absolutely correct, but I just went out and bought all my garden plants and all our house plants from the school, and they're beautiful. They're terrific, and the kids are waiting on you, and they're happy to see you, and it's great. It's great. There's no pressure of, oh, well, you ought to buy this. It's just wonderful. And I'm also getting a couple of chairs made by another program, outside chairs, and just these schools are doing phenomenal things. And folks, take advantage of it. Take advantage of it, because, you know, you're helping the programs, and the kids love to see you.
You can build me a robot anytime to do some of my work. Thank you.
Thanks again, and thanks to you, Rick, for organizing our program for this evening. Next item is our 2013-14 textbook adoptions. Over the course of the past school year, the Montgomery County Public Schools Curriculum Supervisors for English Language Arts, Mathematics, Social Science, Science, and Career and Technical Education conducted textbook reviews in accordance with the Code of Virginia and the Virginia Department of Education. The textbooks review and approval process is quite intense. It involves educators, parents, involves a public notice of textbook adoptions, and they're brought to you this evening for information. The books are also on display for the board in the anteroom to the boardroom. Although the books are presented for adoption this year, purchasing will occur over a three-year period. The recommendations are again for information tonight and for your approval at the May 20th meeting, and I believe we've got our curriculum supervisors in the room if you should have specific questions about any of the recommendations.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Not yet. Will they be available on the 20th before we vote?
I see no reason that we can't make them available again.
Are they still going to be back there?
Yes, they'll be displayed in the same place.
I do have a question. I saw the books back there. How many of them are accompanied with discs or something that you can sit down and use your computer or your device?
Somehow I knew you were going to ask that question. Judy, would you?
Do we have an answer for that?
Yes, we do.
Yes, all of the core texts have online, and some of them have both online and DVD devices.
All of them?
Yeah. I mean, that's the world we live in.
Yes.
They're going to offer that to us.
Yeah, I think that's wonderful, but then why are we bothering with the books?
Because not every child has a device.
That's it.
Well, we might be, but I saw the price of the books, and some of them were in the hundreds.
Yes.
And we might better buy devices.
Well, that is your decision to make.
Yes, it is.
Typically, when we're purchasing the online textbook, we're purchasing it as well, because it's intellectual property. It's taken to develop the text. So, you know, depending on a $100 textbook, it may be $20 less than that, but we're still going to pay.
Well, I'm looking through the price list right now, and it's astronomical.
Yes.
And I'm thinking, okay, if there's, we're headed in the right direction.
Yeah.
And the devices will be accompanied with the books. So what good is the device with the book if the kid doesn't have, I mean, if there's discs or something with the books, the kid doesn't have a device?
I hear you.
So we're still at the same point.
Right. We will have, for students who would like to carry home a CD instead of a textbook, we'd have that available to them. We'll have textbooks for students who carry home textbooks, and we'll have online resources as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's all there.
Thank you.
We're with you, Mr. Ivers.
We are.
I hear you, but I still say there are still some students that want a book, and we got books. So, you know, I still say that, and tables are great, but books are too.
Oh, I'm one of those people. My wife has a Nook or whatever you call them, and every now and then I read a book in that thing, and I'm thinking, whoa, I need to turn the pages, but I'm 103 years old.
Yeah, but I have a 14-year-old that feels the same way you do.
So that's appropriate for me. But for younger people, the people out here, I think that the devices are going to be the future, and it's their world, and if we continue to mess around with textbooks and follow that path, we're headed in the wrong direction. We've got to get into the 21st century.
Yes, but you'll also discover that some publishers still have a long way to go. Some of these books you can't view on some devices and some you can. It's still not there totally.
And still, there's quite a discrepancy with the book price and the device price, unfortunately.
And we have no money.
There will come a day.
I hope.
I hope so, too.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Our next item regards, is in regards to potential work sessions on the six-year plan for the board. Thank you all again for joining us this evening.
Yes, thank you.
It's our pleasure to have you.
This is great.
As you know, our current six-year plan ends this coming fall. Under the leadership of Dr. Lois Graham, the process for developing our new plan is underway. She has engaged a team to work with her to collect input from students, faculty and staff, leadership, parents, and community. The board has been kept apprised of the activities today through the board update. In the most recent board update, board members were asked to complete an online survey, and the board update includes the address for you to go to to complete a Survey Monkey, and we would certainly encourage you to do that, to give us some additional information. We really need your input to move forward in this process. Two members of the board attended a community input meeting prior to the board meeting on April 29th. As the next step, it is important to fully involve the board with establishing the vision, mission, and goals for the school division. Finding opportunities to get the entire board together is challenging, as evidenced by our recent attempts to set retreat dates. It looks like it might be September before we find a time that everyone can be available for us to do that. We're still working on it. The plan cannot move forward without your involvement. As an alternative to setting additional standalone meetings, I discussed with the board chair the potential for the board to convene at 6:00 PM prior to your meeting scheduled on June 3rd and June 17th for the specific purpose of getting your input for this important plan. It may be that only one of the dates will be required. We could possibly get everything done with one at one time, and if that's the case, then we wouldn't need to do it at the second meeting. But I'm requesting your consideration of both dates, should they be needed. I'm presenting these extended meeting times for your consideration and potential action this evening.
Questions, comments?
I think it's a good idea, and I would hope that we can get it done at the first one, because I won't be here for the second.
What year are we in with the last six-year plan?
The last year.
Are we?
It actually runs out in the fall, but we thought it would be good to get the new school year started with the new plan in place, so we're, you know, kind of trying to expedite just a little bit instead of switching horses after school starts.
I looked in my files, and I have the, believe it or not, I have the six-year plan from five years ago. Would it be wise to peruse that, because I'm sure there's going to be?
I'm going to ask Dr. Graham to comment on that, because she's been.
I'm not, I'm sure you're not reinventing the wheel, and I'm sure you're taking that plan and making adjustments and additions, or am I wrong?
A little bit of both. We reviewed the last six-year plan and what we accomplished in that plan, but we've tried to streamline this one a little bit. In the last plan, we based a lot on federal guidelines and state guidelines, and then the federal guidelines changed, and the state guidelines changed. So we've tried to make this one a little broader so that it gives us leeway during each year to make changes and to align with the federal and state guidelines as well. So we've made this one a little broader.
Okay. Thank you.
I think the vision, mission, and the major goal areas might be very similar, so if you were going to look at the old plan, that would be what I would recommend you look at. Vision, mission, and the titles of the goal areas.
I was very pleased, I thought, with the meeting that was held for the entire public. There was a good turnout, and I liked the way you had the feedback going in the different areas. I thought it was, hopefully you got some good feedback, but it seemed like you did.
What were the days that you threw out at us before?
There are the two June board meetings. I think it's June 3rd and 17th.
And you're asking possibly that we could start at 6:00?
At 6:00.
Okay.
And we would, you know, facilitate making that as easy for you as possible.
Okay. Board members, would you take a look at that in your calendar and see if that's going to be appropriate?
I just looked. I'm good.
Yes, I'm good, too.
Ms. Franklin, you indicated that one of those days was difficult?
The second meeting. So if we need, if we could maybe start it even earlier to try to finish up?
If you are willing to start a little bit earlier, we are very willing to start a little bit earlier. What do you think, Lois? 5:30?
That'd be great.
Yeah, that would give us a good, almost solid, two hours.
So 5:30 on the 3rd and the 17th?
Hopefully, we'll only have to use the one.
Yeah.
We start that one early.
Okay. It means June 3rd.
Okay.
Okay. And, okay. And you'll notify Mr. Jones, probably?
Yes.
Any other comments, questions?
And the last item that I have is the calendar of activities, and you have that before you. It includes not only all kinds of school-based opportunities, but also includes the fine arts calendar, and you'll see that it is slam-packed with lots of things for you to be able to do, because it is that time of the year, so.
Yes, it is.
I encourage you to attend the things that interest you or that your schedule will allow you to attend.
Thank you very much for that.
Now I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Any unfinished business, board members? New business?
There was one unfinished business thing I wanted to ask about. I meant to earlier. I know at one point, a couple of months ago, we were going to re-approach the concept of tolerance and how we were, zero tolerance, and we had talked about scheduling and talking about that in March, and I know we never did. Are we, are we still considering talking about our policy as it pertains to that?
I thought that that was somewhere in the works, and someone threw a date out, but I can't remember what it was.
I'm not familiar with that. It would probably be a retreat topic, I would suspect. Is that part of the retreat topics? Brenda?
Based on my recollection, it was determined that that would be better served as a retreat topic.
I think you're right.
Initially, I think we had talked about the possibility of March for retreat dates, but we've since.
Okay, that may have been where I got that information when I was thinking.
Absolutely. But it's still on our.
It's still on the radar. Okay.
Along with that, zero tolerance, the state has come out with their new recommendations, and I forget what it's called.
Threat assessment.
I can't hear you.
Threat assessment.
Threat assessment.
Threat assessment.
Yes, threat assessment.
If you will recall, Mr. Garrettson did a presentation.
Exactly.
On that.
I have a copy of that. Do the rest of the board members have a copy of that? Because it's good bedtime reading.
I don't know that I do.
Could we get copies of that for each board member? Good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Any other, new business?
Well, since we can't comment on public address or public hearings except under new business, and at our public hearing last, was it last week?
Friday.
Whenever we had that, okay? There were some comments that were made that have lingered with me, and I'd just like to speak to those around teacher salaries and the hours that they work, and because they are salary employees, that we should just abuse them and have them work all the time. Basically, to me, that's how that comes down. And I just think that what we pay our teachers is not enough, and the hours that they put in is, you know, just unbelievable that these teachers will come in at 6:00 and 7:00 in the morning, and they're there to 6:00 and 7:00 in the evening. They're there on weekends. So I was really taken back by that comment. And also the comment about devices and how we should be putting so much money into devices and not be paying our teachers. Well, it's just like a book. You can put it in front of a student, but if you don't have a qualified teacher or instructor to help the child understand how to use it or explain exactly what's going on in it, what's the point? You know, so I've, you know, been holding those on to this moment for a week or however long that was, and I just needed to get that off my chest, because I just felt that was just so unfortunate to have our teachers being thought of as basically worthless.
And it's funny you to say that, because I want to piggyback on that comment. I saw something actually on Facebook last week that was a video that if anybody else got it, somebody ought to watch it. And it was, it talked about how we're becoming a nation to where nobody talks anymore. Everybody, and it showed lots of sitting in front of the restaurant, and everybody's on their phones, nobody's putting them down. I mean, and it went through and was just talking about how devices are taking over everybody's personality. Nobody writes letters, nobody talks anymore, nobody discusses personality. I mean, and it was a really cool two-minute video that everybody ought to see, because it's what's happening. And, you know, they were, they were just making comment about is this, this is how we want our lives to be, and it was really neat. So if I can get a hold of it, I'm going to forward it on. But you're exactly right, because devices are great with learning, but they can also be obsessive, and that's not a good thing, because we've lost the human contact.
I think I saw that.
It's phenomenal.
I did, too.
It's phenomenal.
It starts with the fact that you're missing an opportunity to meeting your future.
Exactly. It was a young man who was doing it. Exactly.
Because you're so occupied.
Exactly, but the whole, the whole video.
It is a good one.
It was very good.
But, and I think that our approach is just that. We're edu, we're not giving the kids devices and say, use them. We're educating the youngsters as to what this is all about and what the social graces are involved and so on. Ms. Franklin, I've been in education my whole life, since I was six years old, but after college, I kind of changed, and I was up in front of the class instead of, and I have told people who say what you reiterated, I said, spend three days in a classroom. They won't do it. They won't do it. I've offered people who have belittled teachers and said that they are overpaid and underworked and so on, I said, just step in front of that class, and I'll give you, I just want you to do it for three days. So anyway, thank you. That was very good point.
I would like to also bring up something similar, but a different point of new business, and no one else may be interested in finding out, and if they're not, that's okay. I would like to see, we talk about how cutting budget has affected a lot of things, and I've just kind of, in nonchalant communication and talking, gotten some feedback on how taking lunch aids out of the lunchroom has really affected teachers in the younger grades, like kindergarten and pre-K, not getting lunchtime. And I don't know if that's just communication that I'm getting, but, you know, if that's the case in that how some of our custodian staff are having to fill in at cafeteria and squirt and ketchup and opening packets and things like that, and, you know, how is this? how, how is this affecting our students at lunch and our teachers get, not getting their lunch periods and, and custodians not being able to, if there's only one custodian in one of our new buildings, and they're not being able to get around to doing everything they need to do? And then we look at our buildings and go, wow, aren't they the way they're supposed to be? Well, because I'm dumping trays and squirting ketchup. Um, and with that being said, you know, sometimes we do have money after the fact, and sometimes we can reinstate, and I would like to see that be one of the things that we might look at. Maybe I'm the only one, and if I am, okay, but if someone else shares my concerns.
I think the lunch aids have been gone now for two years.
It is.
And certainly, they are missed because they were another set of hands in our elementary school cafeterias. And when that set of hands went, then the people who did pick up the slack are the teachers, the support staff, and the administrators in the schools. The same is true of our library aids, but if you'll think about it, we've spent five budget cycles taking things away, and at the same point in time, we've had to add other things because they've been mandated or because of changing standards, and, you know, I look forward to a day when we actually have money. The danger in reinstating with carryover money is the same danger that we encountered this year, and this past year was the first time I have ever recommended using one-time money for recurring expense, and it was a desperate move because we so much needed additional hands to support our mathematics program because of our three high schools. And if we get, if we have carryover money, and that's something that the board wants to entertain as a use of carryover money, it certainly is a good topic for conversation.
Well, and I know there's not a lot of probably open area for people that might only want three hours a day, but there are, there is a group out there that could use that extra three hours of day of just money, you know?
Well, we cut them in half, basically, and that's, was a budget cut. This is, next year would be the third year that that cut had, would be in place. So, there are a lot of other really important things that we've cut, and so I think when we look at reinstating things, we need to look at them in terms of all the things that we've taken out of the school system.
Well, and I guess one of my conversation pieces for that is it, it's maybe because it's not a learning device, and I don't mean like device, just a learning opportunity or a teaching, uh, you know, someone like that. I wonder if we've, you know, that, it, it's still an important role. That's what I'm trying to say.
They're not, every role is valuable.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any other new business comments or new business itself? Announcements and information? Any announcements or information?
I have one I'd like to make. I don't usually make one, but, uh, I'd like to say a special thanks tonight to all of our teachers and staff members. This is actually the week designated for appreciation of our educators, both our teachers and our support staff. And we have quite a team here at Montgomery County Public Schools. It's a team of people committed to educating the 9,600 students that walk in our doors each and every day. So, I'd like to thank you for what you do to prepare our students for their lives, for the community, and for the world. And related to that, we picked our peer representative of all of our teachers and recognized him last Friday at Kips Elementary School, Glenn Schilkot. You all know him because his, um, musical group from Kips has been here and also was at, uh, VSBA in, uh, November, the Three O'Clock Band. And what a wonderful choice to represent all of our many fine educators. And three of our schools this week distinguished themselves by earning the Board of Education's Excellence Award, and those three schools were Harding, Gilbert Linkus, and Kips Elementary School. All of our schools doing great things, but those three met some, uh, pretty rigid requirements to earn that recognition. So, again, thanks to the team for the great work that you do each and every day.
Upcoming school board meetings. You can see the list there.
May I have, may I have one, uh, acknowledgement? I just attended the Blacksburg High School Spring Musical, and the kids did a fantastic job. It was, it was great performance, and so I'd like to acknowledge Kerry Mayer and the Blacksburg High School Theater Department. The facility was, of course, gorgeous, so that helped, uh, helped the cause too, but it was a really great musical. Legally Blonde was great. Sorry.
Thank you.
Didn't mean to.
It's okay. Um, you see the upcoming school board meetings. As I mentioned to Ms. Blackburn, um, the May 20th meeting, I possibly will not be at that meeting, but, uh, Mr. Jones will be here. And then we talked about the June 3rd meeting, uh, starting at 5:30, and then the 17th would be a regular time. Any other comments on the, um, calendar upcoming events? Motion for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.